The Runby Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Schools of 1975 entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting is appropriately advertised by notifying in retrospect, as well as posting notices at the Runby Post Office, Maryville School, Align Bayland School, Grace Stanley School, and the Runby Public School District website. These flags are the Pledge of Allegiance. Here's the flag back here. You guys want to see it?
You have to raise your hands, please. The flag, thank you. Break me across your chest, give me a nice little talk.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Both of all Board members?
Ms. Herr, Ms. Bev, Mr. Buckner, Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrill?
No.
Ms. Murray?
Here.
Ms. Benzarella?
Here.
Ms. Sam?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
We have a board.
Also present, Mark Mayucci, Superintendent Superintendent Sean McCarron, this is the Administrator Supervisor for Urban Instruction, Principal Jay Yazzy, Middle of the Gann School, Vice Principal Wolf School, Phil Silva, Lattice Hubbard, Child Safety Team Supervisor, Mr. Frank Heinz Supervisor of Building and Grounds. At this time, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on 10/16/18.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minute.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Dennis. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Benzarella?
Yes.
Ms. Sam?
Yes.
Ms. Walden?
Yes.
Ms. Bassett?
For the Financial Reporting Motion for the Period-Ending Opterance for 2018. I'll make a motion to approve the period. Motion made by Maria, seconded by Dan. Roll call.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Benzarella?
Yes.
Ms. Sam?
Yes.
Ms. Walden?
Yes.
Ms. Bassett?
So, Jazzy, we're running for ya.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. It's my pleasure to present Ms. Razavi and her students this evening. They're going to share some of their Thanksgiving performance that they will be posting tomorrow for all the parents. Parents, thank you for coming out. We really appreciate it. Since we're best friends, so I guess we better get started. Ms. Razavi is a pleasure to work with, and I really appreciate her coming out this evening and sharing her towns, as well as each and every one of her student towns here tonight. So, enjoy the show, and again, thank you for coming out to dance with us. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So, I do the whole show, but we have a little snippet of what's to be happening tomorrow. Ten of our students, up nine of them showed up tonight. And are you ready, boys and girls? All right, say it out. So, the boys and girls have been learning about the season fall. They've been learning about various animals that are preparing for hibernation. One animal is the squirrel.
(Singing) Gray squirrel, gray squirrel, swish your bushy tail. Gray squirrel, gray squirrel, swish your bushy tail. Hold on up between your paws, wrinkle up your funny nose. Gray squirrel, gray squirrel, swish your bushy tail.
Great job. So, usually I play the piano, so some of this stuff's going to be out of the box. Can't play the piano.
Yeah, right.
There's a boy, he said he was going to try, so I don't want you to bring his back. They've also been learning about how the leaves change color and fall from the trees. So, we're going to sing our fall song for you now. (Singing) The summer is over, the fall is here. The wind is blowing cold. The fluttering leaves that fall from the trees are turning from leaf to gold. Great job. So, did our first computer project, where they had to actually go on the computer, type their first and last name, and then a sentence telling what they're thankful for? And we've been really working hard on tracking print and reading print. So, boys and girls, would you pick up your cards? And Jase, would you start us off, please? Go ahead.
I am in grade four, my class is middle.
A little bit louder, so everybody can hear you. Try it one more time.
I am in grade four, my class is middle.
Oh.
I am in grade four, my class is middle. I am in grade four, my class is middle. I am in grade four, my class is middle. I am in grade four, my class is middle. I am in grade four, my class is middle. I am in grade four, my class is middle. I am in grade four, my class is middle. I am in grade four, my class is middle. I am in grade four, my class is middle.
Boys and girls, show them what you typed on the computer. Hold it up. And draw your illustration, the macro, the illustrations. Good job. All right, put your cards down now, and we're going to move on to the next part. So, we're going to skip some things and go to the next part, okay? You know that the pilgrims, the Native American Indians, didn't just eat turkey at their Thanksgiving feast, they also ate venison and roasted goose. But most of us eat turkey at our Thanksgiving feast, so the children are going to be eager to share their turkey poems for you. Ready, guys? Uh, turkey.
(Singing) Turkey is a funny bird, its head goes wobble wobble. And all he says is just one word, gobble, 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 gobble. (Singing) Turkey is a funny bird, he flies, he walks. And as he's walking, he's chasing after all those birds he loves. (Singing) Turkey dances all around, he dances on his feet. And on his Thanksgiving day, he's something good to eat.
So, we're going to close with a fine turkey song. The children made special turkey puppets to feed, and they're going to be singing the tune with every fine turkey. We'll wait till all our friends get their puppies, though. All right, you ready, everybody? Dex, are you okay over there, buddy? All right, hold it up. Hold it up there. All right, let's go.
(Singing) I'm a blue-eyed turkey, and I sing a fine song. Gobble, 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 gobble. All step around, all around, all day long. And when others still follow, they follow. And on his Thanksgiving, when Thanksgiving day comes to him, gobble, 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 gobble. Although I'm alive, still I can't see there. And when others still follow, they follow.
Good job. Good job. So, you see, she just got here, and she doesn't have her card or anything, but she can tell what she's thankful for. Remember what's on your card? I am thankful. Okay, you stay in your line. Stay.
I am in grade four.
Very good. If she can sing one song since she's here, come step up from the line. Now, we're going to do Gray Squirrel, so everybody put your puppets down. I don't want her to miss out. But we're going to be doing more tongue, we're going to do this Gray Squirrel song, okay? So, that way, you cannot let the key here get in. All right, everybody get ready for Gray Squirrel one more time, okay? Yay.
(Singing) Gray squirrel, gray squirrel, swish your bushy tail. Gray squirrel, gray squirrel, swish your bushy tail. Hold on up between your paws, wrinkle up your funny nose. Gray squirrel, gray squirrel, swish your bushy tail.
Great job. We did a doctor's exam for projects. The boys and girls made a leaf man project. We also did a torn paper leaf project for a fine motor skills, and we put that on the whole board. They made pumpkins, and we also made a color wheel and turned it into a turkey. So, I'm very proud of all my students. I think they did a great job. Let's give them another round of applause. And, boys and girls, at this time, can you pick up your card and your turkey underneath, and bring it over to Ms. Razavi, so I can stack it up, like I get your puppy. All right, so Mike is going to go first, and then what you're going to do is, once you give me your card and your puppet, you go to your family member, get your coat on, and go home. Thanks so much for coming, boys and girls. Ms. Razavi would like to say a few words before we continue the meeting, so Ms. Razavi, what's yours? Okay. So, as everybody pretty much knows, this is my retirement year, and I have mixed emotions. So, you know, it's kind of like I did the chapter. Chapter's closing, and it's time to move on to the next one. So, I wrote a little quick something I wanted to say to the board and whoever, who else was here. So, it says, Dear Runby Board of Education, oh, we're trying not to cry. It's been a pleasure for the least work in Runby School District for 36 years. I will be retiring on July 1st, and we have to go to the seniors. I feel like I can only head high to say that I'm tired. Are you guys ready to sleep in the stairs? Are you kids at my pad? I know, so is. All right. I said I was going to do this. Boys, I am looking forward to my retirement in Florida. As if you are too. Look, he's like, we're up here. Um, I'm able to live my life on a tree, no more. Enjoy the quiet. I wish everybody could have a feedback, you know? And you got this, everybody. I'm busy, so I'm not going to. I'm busy, so I'm not going to. But anyway, I saved myself, I'm not going to cry, and I did anyway, I'm sorry. But it's a mental time, you know? I'm glad you succeeded and read that publicly. I wasn't going to, because I thought, I know we can show it off, but thanks to Mr. I and everybody here pulled me through, and I appreciate it. Thank you. I'm going to miss everybody, you know, everything here, so thank you. Thank you. It's hope Chaz, you missed out, I'll be crying. I will. And he's for our kids, he's worthy. But he's in Texas with his son. Oh, okay. So, he has a valid excuse. All right, well, thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we're open for public comments on agenda items. Does anyone have any comments on agenda items on leave this time? All right, if not, then we will move on to Ms. Mayucci and the Superintendent's Board.
Yes, it is. I'll try to pull up some with bigger space than we usually are. District enrollment, we're up a little more, we're at the start of the year, we're 821 students, six athletic places. As many of you know, preschool expansion is underway. We have some of our new hires here, which we'll introduce later on this evening. Currently, all supplies and equipment is in order, it's on its way. We did look at some other options in the community for holding our preschool, certain places in the future. At this time, we don't have any, we think, viable options, as far as holding the preschool places out on the provider side. We are going to add two places in the reports coming up January 2nd of 2019. We're also going to look to add two more places for the 19th school year. Currently, right now, that's why I also need all that, as well, so we'll have to do some reconfiguration of places. At this time, we don't have any options outside of our preschool, our preschool building at this time. Keep in mind, the grant does not cover any type of scholarship costs, so it's not like we just build a new facility to hold our preschool. We'd love to, but give Frank to other things. At this time, we don't have anything for that. I know next month, Dr. Carr and I go to the next round of preschool expansion, the Co-Work 123. Any information we have from that meeting, we'd be happy to share with you at the December meeting. I want to thank the Dr. Carr Corporation, the foundation back in October, I know that was mainly after our meeting last month, we did have a, I'd say, a bad time.
Was that what the ETA, with their work going on, so they don't have?
Absolutely. We had a lot of families involved, it was a good message. The founders here, we have enjoyed it. I know I enjoyed the presentation. I think after presentation, a lot of them went to the library and the book, so it was good. We did have parent visitation last week, and most of all, the parent conferences this week, trying to get as many people as we can to the schools. Many parents were unable to come for a conference, so we always make sure that we set up alternate conferences for parents to contact, for teachers.
I'm going to make a statement. I'm going to go here.
We do have our mid-year budget coming up in January, and I sent you an email, I believe, just to remind you about that. Just to review the administrative and non-structural expenditures and costs. We are making told that some districts will be in cut budgets, and it's always something that we care about. As anyone, explore other options, explore shared services, improve all our contracts that we use, so we can probably have better pieces for there. That's about all I have for this. At this time, we're trying to use our education, our real-time education, to spread the word out to the community events. So, if anybody has to, if you have something for us to share, let me know. Email me or call me in the school. We're not going to be opposed to our Facebook page, or our website, or send out a list. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Mayucci? Dr. Carr?
So, this month, a lot of time has been spent with preschool, preparing for that. We are currently setting up professional development training with three other school districts that will be taking place in the middle of December for all of our staff members regarding curriculum, the curriculum that will be implemented. We've been dealing with the architect, making sure that rooms are set up accordingly. Frank and I have been working closely with them to make sure that everything's up and running for January 2nd. We are looking at adding in a playground over at Old School, so we've been dealing with the contractor on that, identifying the location for X, and making sure that the playground we will be getting will be preschool-oriented, but it will go up through H-N, so that way, it will still be able to be used by the students at Old, in addition to the preschool students as well. Right now, we are in the final stages. I just spoke with Ray Colby, our auditor today, he finalized all the audit pieces. We submit the first part of the audit the first week in December. Ray will probably be coming out, we're sending a message at our December board meeting regarding where we are with the audit, and where we had different lives here. We're preparing for negotiations, and then we're also preparing for CUSAC. So, it's been extremely busy kind of for both curriculum and this is all that's left.
Anything further? Any questions for Dr. McCarron?
Just one question.
Yes?
Just one, we're recording from here. This question requires the bid that was pulled by the contractor.
Yes. So, where we stand with that is, our lawyers, our school's listener, sent a letter to their lawyer requesting the bid bond. So, as of right now, they are contesting the bid bond, and our lawyers, you know, going back and forth to state why we're entitled to that piece, and we'll see where that lands us. So, as of right now, that's going back and forth. We technically aren't pleased hearing from the other side, so we've been reaching out. However, as we discuss at the board, we aren't necessarily spending, we're paying attention to it, but we aren't going to go that deep with our lawyers in terms of litigation.
All the money. Any other questions? So, the principals' reports, as well as the nurses' report, Building and Grounds, Special Reports, were attached to our agenda. Does anyone have any questions there? All right, all the reports, ETA, we've just been having a lot of, if you're, we've been having with a lot of T-dolls and candy garden goes, and they've been very successful. Thank you. All the, sorry, my picture's a little annoying, so it's all, yeah. Always an excuse, right, to go out to the. Board committees, the one committee, what was the exact?
Policy and Public Relations.
Policy and Public Relations Committee, we met this evening, and we talked about everything that Mark and Sean have been doing, and I just want to extend my sincere gratitude. It's been a lot of work for them in the past month, trying to get this preschool situation working for us, but of course, it's going to benefit so many students in our town, so we're extremely grateful, so thank you. We also talked about the, something that was in the past that we would like to revisit again, and we talked about it last month, and we talked about it again this month, and we asked Dr. McCarron and Ms. Mayucci to move forward and create, like, and analyze the situation in regards to community schools. If you don't know what community schools are, there's like several options. Like, right now, we had K to two, K to three schools. Special education is housed in one school, not the other school, so we were looking at maybe starting like a community schooling, and that model would be like possibly, this is just very basic, very new, something that we've only talked about in committee, like, maybe like a K to one building, and a two to three building, and be inclusive to everyone. So, we, the committee has asked Ms. Mayucci, Dr. McCarron to move forward and start analyzing transportation, staffing, scheduling, and things like that. So, I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware, because now that they're almost done with preschool, we're like, oh, by the way, here, we want to move forward this, so I just wanted to publicly let you all know that that's what we're doing in that committee. That's something that Chaz and I have been, have talked about several times together, and something that we feel as though, as a board, we support, so we don't let stuff, because it might be, in years together, we wasn't touching subjects, and a lot of years in like the change of buildings and all, but it's just what we think that there's, and we'll have a list for you, but like, we just think that if we made like a team chart, the pros outweigh the cons by far, so that's something that the committee asked our admin teams to work on. And then we talked about preschool and communication, and how all of that, like even with the women's club, different things, like utilize that, because it goes out to all of our founders in the community, so just shoot them an email. It's, I said, it's better to get a text than it is to get one of them robo calls, so something, that's all we're talking about. Camden County Educational Services Commission, Chaz sent us an email in regards to that, as well as his planning and zoning for the Jersey Security Association, the other thing for us, name of the client. You are some classes coming up this summer, maybe we all signed up already. Yeah, so we can't be meetings, and I'm going around classes, or maybe it's one class about negotiations, if someone wants. It's going today. Yes. Absolutely. Yes, so I think you signed up this summer, means county meeting, hilarious. I don't know any of the dates. It said there's something on 27th next week. There's a county meeting on 27th. Yes. Yes, that's in 27th.
27th or 29th? Oh, I have it in my calendar, it's 27th. Well, it's better than 29th, so definitely for me, yeah.
All right, so would you just let us know that, please?
Yeah.
So, does anyone else have anything else that they need to add at this time? Committee-wise? No, we're good? Okay, then we'll move on to new business. Anything else of you? No, okay. Property and Transportation, I need a motion to approve items number one through five.
I'll make a motion to approve item number one under Transportation.
Motion made by Naomi.
Okay.
Seconded by Patty. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Derek.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrill.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Benzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sam.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Ms. Bassett.
Under Personnel, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through 12. Motion made by Maria.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi.
Who did it?
Oh, I got Naomi. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Derek.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrill.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Benzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sam.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Ms. Bassett.
Before we move on, I just want to introduce some of our new hires. If you wouldn't mind, I'm not going to ask you to stand up and sing your school voice or anything like that, but if you could just, if you could just maybe raise your hand, like, call your name, just a little wave, you know, your board likes to recognize your face, especially if you're a new hire. Lauren Greenwood, our substitute nurse, slash teacher, right back there.
Hi.
And our proud mother sitting next door. Jennifer Greenwood.
Hello.
Welcome.
Hello.
Nicole Plodnick, who you might recognize, one of our, actually, a field hockey coaches this year, the championship team.
Yes.
Nice to see. Nicole is sliding over into the pre-K floor, one of the expansion positions, as you already said, she's been here for years now. I'm excited that she's been able to give us opportunity, she's looking forward to it, so we're officially depositionable. And then Haley Carbone, in the back there. Haley's coming to us from Fall of Oz. We're very excited to have her, she's got great experience in pre-K over there. We're excited to have her, a wonderful family herself. All three of you welcome.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
This time, under Fighting, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through 13.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Derek.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrill.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Benzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sam.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Ms. Bassett.
Under Curriculum, I need a motion for items numbers one through six. Four, five, and six were added. All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve items one through six. Maria. Second, can I go second?
I am.
Patty. Any questions?
I'm sorry, yeah.
That's okay. Roll call.
Ms. Derek.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrill.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Benzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sam.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Policy and Public Relations, I need a motion for item number one and two.
I'll make a motion to approve item number one and two under Policy and Transportation.
Motion made by Naomi.
I'll begin started.
You have a question.
I'll fight it.
Oh, damn, I didn't give him a question.
I think I can be fighting.
Lots of sympathy.
Roll call.
Ms. Derek.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrill.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Benzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sam.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Ms. Bassett.
At this time, we are now open for recognition of any citizens or safety at this time that would like to make public comment.
Ms. Sands.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Ms. Passas.
At this time, we are now open for recognition of, um, any citizens or safety this time that would like to make public comment.
Hi, this is Kelly. Eleanor Kelly.
That's fine.
Uh, one sixty-one for assignment. Couple questions, how many are in the preschool program now, how many children?
Just under sixty?
In the preschool program?
Yeah, pre-K, grade four, yes, there's sixty children.
How many?
Sixty, roughly sixty.
Now you're gonna add two more.
Yes.
How many more children?
Fifteen each classroom, so.
So that'll bring us to a total of ninety?
No, seventy-five, because they're going from half-day to full-day. So we're taking one classroom that's split into two, and then you add two full days, plus adding one more, so you're only adding fifteen.
Okay, one, okay, so seventy-five, right?
Total.
So then, in the next year, you're gonna add two more. Right? And that'll bring it up to?
From the total preschool program.
One oh five.
In pre-K four alone, you're gonna have five classrooms with fifteen in each, so you're at seventy-five. Our average class size in Runnymede is eighty-eight to one hundred. So you're still not at full capacity.
So that's good. So it'll allow for expansion. Okay, now you're thinking of a facility. If you go into community schools, which is what you're kind of thinking, would that allow you have the expansion still with? So you're gonna, what about the library, did you think about maybe setting up a classroom in the library?
One of the issues that we're finding with any location we look at, is that the Department of Education has many regulations when it comes to preschool. There's size regulations, there's bathroom requirements, there's facility regulations that have to be followed. So everywhere, there's outdoor requirements or outdoor space, there's play space that's required, so there's a lot of different pieces. With the expansion money, they are giving us the money to run the room, they are not giving us the money to build the room. So we have to try and work that in through what we currently have, to build a program where it needs to be. Trust me, we.
We just want to get it now.
We, Ms. Ryanyu and I have been looking at real estate all over Runnymede, and, um, checking out every location.
I would just say all over Runnymede, why? Because you're always looking for digital facilities for the town, and, uh, it, it's, it's just not there. Oh, what about the high school? Why can't you do something in the high school?
We don't have any rooms at the high school. We don't have rooms, we don't have any rooms at the high school, we just, we just, we've been expanding different things. You know, um, culinary arts programs, technology programs, if no one has these classrooms, they're all being utilized as well.
Well, you know, something might happen, if you do community schools, and you don't think that that's gonna solve the problem. I guess you just have to figure that out, that comes down. Now, the community schools. Do you think, have you looked at other towns that have done this, other school districts?
This is really, um, the first time that some of the board members have even been hearing it about it, about, about the one committee's desire to move in this direction, and a lot of the board members are new. In the past, we did, I know Ms. Ryanyu and I have talked about it, and did a little bit of research on it, he probably did it before that I have. Um, but that's another part, another part of what we asked the general, our admin team to start doing for us.
Yeah, look at, look at brothers, I guess they were in success, right? But what, have they were eight, ninety months, that's, and now they sold it to parents. But you know, that's not happening, so, because the children will be going to their neighbor.
Well, like we said, we feel, in our opinion, that the pros outweigh the cons, so if the parents have issues, then we'll be more than happy. But this is extremely premature.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. I, I like that I think they're thinking about it, I think it's fourth grade, go. And, um.
I think it builds community, um, like camaraderie, like from the beginning, because our kids go to school together now since, uh, like the age of three. So they start all together, so if they were all together, and they became like a family at age three, instead of in fourth grade at age ten, you know, you think of like the lifelong friendships that they could begin to build there. Just, just one possible, like, scenario.
I don't know offhand with another school district, well, I'll check it out myself, and I'll see what other school districts are doing. And, uh.
I think you'll give me some good reading to check out community schools.
Yes, yes. That's all I have, thank you.
Have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Anybody else at this time, and any public comment? There is no executive session needed, so our next regular Board of Education meeting date is Tuesday, December eighteenth, seven AM our time, and that will be at Old School. Um, any other, happy Thanksgiving, enjoy yourselves. Uh, any good little order? No? Happy Thanksgiving? If not, any a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Maria. Seconded by Dennis, all favor?
I am.